The Planning Commission because the Parks Commission is so much more fun than the Planning Commission, but you know. So first I'm going to ask everybody to sort of introduce themselves briefly. And then we, as part of a public meeting, we have to have a roll call. So I will call the role for the Parks Commissioner and Mark will call the role for the Planning Commissioners. Does that make sense? Okay, so why don't you start out, Kevin?
My name is Kevin T. I'm the Deputy Director for Parks Recreation and Facilities. And I work very closely with the Parks Commission.
I'm Angelina Meyer, and I'm the Director of Parks Recreation and Facilities. And yeah, Kevin is the liaison for the Parks Commission.
Hi, my name is Zoe Jiang. I'm a new Parks Commissioner.
Hey Zoe. Can you grab a mic?
Oh, yeah.
There you go. So there's not enough mics for everybody. I was told to remind everybody of this. There's not enough mics for everybody, so share and be nice. And remember to use them, please.
All right, hi, everyone. Oops. My name is Zoe Jiang. I'm a new Parks Commissioner. Nice to meet everyone. I'm also a Skyline teacher just across the street.
My name is Sayed Safavian. I'm a Planning Commissioner and glad to see you guys. I've been doing this kind of thing for the number of cities, being a Planning Commissioner for so long for Issaquah, so that's my background.
I'm Hank Klein. I'm on the Parks Commission, have been for a long time.
Sudha Sundara, Planning Commissioner. I'm new to this second meeting, so.
Welcome, Sayed.
Chris Davis, Parks Commission, first year.
I'm Tracy Smith, Parks Commission Vice Chair, and I think I'm on my third year.
I'm Nancy Wade, Chair of the Parks Commission. I think I've been doing this for 10 years, but it feels like forever.
All right, I'm Mark Baughman on the Planning Commission. I'm going a different direction than tell you my history and tell you that the glow you see is because I'm on sabbatical right now. So I may lose attention at any point during this meeting. And yeah, that was it.
Jason Shirk and Parks Commission, start earlier this year.
Hello, Carrie Bosworth. I'm on the Planning Commission, and I've been on the Planning Commission since spring 2022.
Sid Gupta, Parks Commission. I think I joined in 2015, so this is my eighth year.
John Bachman. I was appointed a year ago this month, and I've been a resident for, I think, 32 years.
Kelly Hildy, Deputy Director of Community Development. I've been with the city for 14 years.
David Pyle, Community Development Director. And I've been here for just about eight years, which is hard to believe because it's gone by very quickly, so.
Hello, everyone. My name is Rose. I am the Natural Resources and Environmental Sustainability Coordinator. I've been with the city since February. Great to be here. Thanks so much.
Do you want to introduce yourselves too?
Sure.
Hi, Evan Fisher, Planning Commission Coordinator and with DCD and Kelly's team.
Julian Bravo, and I am the Planning Commission Coordinator.
All right, I'll do the roll call for Parks. Tracy? Here. Sid?
Here.
Hank?
Here.
Jason?
Here.
Roberto? I believe he's traveling. Mark? And he is traveling. Chris?
Here.
And Zoe.
Here.
Great.
And for the Planning Commission, obviously, I'm Mark. I'm here. Mike Bresko is currently hiking in Glacier, which sounds great. Carrie Bosworth.
Present.
John Bachman.
Here.
I'm not sure where Ajay is, so he's obviously not here. Sayed Safavian.
Here.
And Sudha Rani Sundara.
Next, I will call for approval of the agenda, which, as you can see, is just two big informational packages here. Is there any objections to that or any changes that anyone would like to make? If not, we will proceed to the approval of meeting summary. Any changes to the meeting summary from last time? No? So I will take that as approval and we will go forward. I want to remind everyone that this is a public meeting and it is being recorded as such. And if you want to make public comment, you can do so by following the protocol, putting your hand up in the chat box, and we will call on you. Is there any public comment? Anyone in the House or anyone online that wants to make public comment?
We currently have one hand raised online. Mr. Stickney, I'm going to promote you to panelist.
Well, hello, Planning Commissioners and Commission Chair Nancy Way. I got that backwards. Parks Commissioner Chair Nancy Way, Planning Commissioner Chair Bachman, and renowned staff. I've taken a look at the two topics in your joint meeting tonight, and I endorse sustainability completely, but I'm not an expert at that. I am more working on the housing side of things. But in reading the plan, to me, it feels like a very thorough, comprehensive plan and is pretty deep, so it appears to be achieving a lot of really good objectives. And the pros plans are always good. I believe, if I'm not mistaken, this is the fourth one. I think there was one in 2006, 2012, 2018, and this one's coming up, 2024. Very important and highly valued in our community, and you always do a very thorough job with needs and wants and capital and good planning for our assets for passive and active recreation. Suggest if you get a chance to take a look at the Civic Web and the City Council meeting yesterday, I decided to dive into the deep end in a positive way and to face what I believe is one of the number-one divisive topics for our community, which is two words: housing supplies and what's the right mix. I gave a three-minute public comment, talked about seven meanings of fear and how to move from one side to the other of a continuum to face the issue, chatted about a formula to face the issue, and have sort of changed terminology slightly. I'm calling generational housing now, not necessarily multi-generational housing where people live together, but generational housing is two things. For residents, it's cycle-of-life housing for planned and unplanned changes, if you want to stay in the city over time. And for our community, it's a seven-generation legacy approach. What range of housing mix do we want to leave for those that live and work in Sammamish over time? And all that I've been working on are like several Cinderella shoe fits to meet economic, demographic, and workforce housing for those that live in Sammamish. So it's about retention and filling in shortages in housing supply to meet the needs for economic, demographic, and workforce folks in the community over time. Appreciate the chance to speak. Have a great meeting.
Thank you very much, Mr. Stickney. Any other comments?
Will you take another public speaker?
Sure. We are a little short of microphones, so we're going to have someone come to you. Kevin here is the man with the mic.
Thank you.
Please state your name and address.
Hi, my name is Phil Ritter. My wife and Lynn and I live at 1737 to 11th Place Northeast in Sammamish. And I've been a member of the Climate Action Plan Community Advisory Group, and I'm also on the Steering Committee for People for Climate Action, which has been advocating for getting climate action plans in 15 different cities around the East Side. And Sammamish is catching up, and we appreciate that. This climate action plan is going to be the basis for policy for a number of years to come. And you can expect that the proposed ordinances that will affect greenhouse gas emissions are going to have to relate to this climate action plan or make a pretty strong case why they didn't. And so what's in this climate action plan is really significant. It's going to affect what happens in terms of the ability of the city to reduce its greenhouse gas emissions over time. And a number of comments have been brought up during these Climate Advisory Committee meetings, which have not resulted in a change in the draft of the Climate Action Plan. And they're referred to in your packet. I don't know how many people had a chance to read through the packet, but there is a list of comments from the members. And in many of those comments, it's referred to to be taken care of later in the legislative process. From what I understand, you are this step in that process. And I hope that on those comments where it says to be taken care of, that you will take a close look at those and actually pass along your support. For example, the method the consultants used to calculate the greenhouse gas emissions in the transportation sector does not take into account the fact that we have, I think, 7% of our light vehicles in Sammamish as EVs. They don't pollute. And if we use their methodology going forward, which is the plan to my knowledge, it means that we can double our EV adoption rate, which is, I hope, one of our goals, and not see it in the numbers. I think that we should make absolutely sure that whatever we adopt as a calculation method will be usable in the future to compare what we're doing, how well we're doing now, with how well we're doing in the future. Another one is just the internal consistency, where the overall goal is to reduce emissions by 50% by 2030. But there's several places where the goal is 2050 instead of 2030. It doesn't relate back to that primary goal. And so I hope that you will pass along in your comments to the City Council that we should ask the consultants to clean this stuff up and not just adopt what they've given us. Thank you very much.
Thank you much for sharing your comments. All right, if there are no further comments, we'll move forward with, actually, what a good segue, our presentation on the Climate Action Plan.
Great. Good evening. David Pyle, Community Development Director. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen, so bear with me for a minute here while I find the right tab to share. Just a second. All right, tonight we are presenting the first public draft of the city's Climate Action Plan and inviting the Parks and Recreation Commission to share their feedback on the draft with the Planning Commission to help inform, review, and discussion of the document next week. It's important that we hear from the Parks Commission and allow for that comment to make its way back to the Planning Commission so that the Planning Commission can begin the official legislative process in review of the draft Climate Action Plan. I'm joined here tonight by Aaron Hawking from Brightworks Sustainability, who is in the cloud and will be joining us here on screen when we get to a certain point in the presentation. I'm also joined to the left by Kelly Hildy, who introduced herself. She's our department's Deputy Director, as well as Rose, whose last name I can never pronounce.
Wiker.
Wiker. And she's the city's Natural Resources and Sustainability Coordinator. She'll be taking on the role of implementing the plan in the long term, so it's great to have her here as part of the discussion as we create the plan. I'm also joined by Miriam Leitner, our Planning Manager, who's in the cloud, and Evan Fisher, our Senior Management Analyst, who is over at the rear dais there and also serves as our Planning Commission Coordinator, Liaison. So the CAP has been an intensive effort that started in the summer of 2022. The project included extensive data analysis and intensive review and refinement of strategies and actions from a broad group of stakeholders to ensure the Climate Action Plan is both implementable and impactful. It's important to remember that this has been a bit of a journey for us. While climate action was likely a high priority for the city, it was not a high enough priority for us to initiate development of a Climate Action Plan until we took on a grant from the State Department of Commerce. And at that point in time, the City Council recognized the value of the work and assigned funding and staffing, added it to our work plan, and expanded the scope to help us get to the point of developing a complete Climate Action Plan, which is the draft you have in front of you tonight. As I mentioned, our goal tonight is to provide an opportunity for the Parks and Recreation Commission to share feedback. So we want to make sure we give time for Parks Commissioners to provide feedback on the draft and what their priorities are with regard to content of the draft and what they want to see happen in the future in Sammamish. We did want to make note to the Planning Commission that there are some changes made to the draft between the last, between when the packet was published and the meeting next week on the 14th. What I mean here is that we have been working on some of the comments you heard from Phil Ritter and from others, and you will be seeing a different draft pushed out as part of the agenda packet for your meeting next Thursday. So the draft you see with tonight's agenda has been revised already with some edits, and you'll be seeing that published later this week for next week's Planning Commission meeting. Keep in mind that this is a very fluid, fast-moving project. The work plan that the City Council set us on was one that was almost not attainable, and we've been working on very short turnarounds, and there's been lots of iterations of this document. So things like, things that Mr. Ritter raised are being incorporated. However, we have to add it to the draft and republish it at a later date. This meeting marks the beginning of the Climate Action Plan Legislative Review, which will continue through the end of the year with anticipated adoption in December. The City Council made it a major goal for us to get this plan done this year, and we are on track to do so with one extra meeting even in the queue. So if something happens, we can continue into, later into December. We wanted to briefly highlight the process followed to develop this draft document so that you understand how we got to the draft you're discussing tonight. The project started with a grant from the Washington State Department of Commerce to develop greenhouse gas emissions and vehicle miles traveled reduction strategies. After analyzing baseline data and a determination that Sammamish's biggest emissions contributors were the home heating and the transportation sector, our consultant, Brightworks, utilized the King County Cities Climate Collaboration Tools, K4C, Return on Carbon Toolkit, to identify impactful actions for Sammamish in relationship to these two main areas. These actions were then refined based on staff input, input from key external stakeholders such as K4C, PSC, the Planning Commission, and the City Council, and the Climate Actions, Action Plans Community Advisory Group. The project team then completed a literature review of Redmond, Issaquah, and Shorelines' Climate Action and Sustainability Plans, as well as the People for Climate Actions, Climate Action Priorities for Cities Workbook, to identify expanded measures and refine previous ones. These have been reviewed by staff, as well as the Community Advisory Group, and the input from the Community Advisory Group was used in the draft we've shared with this evening with this meeting. There will be further refinement during the legislative review with the Planning Commission and City Council this fall. Building on the last slide, we wanted to highlight what the process looked like through the various public meetings in 2023, which informed the Climate Action Plan's development. You can see here that we started off in January of 2023, the Planning Commission and City Council discussing baseline information. In March of 2023, the City Council set our climate goals, which are incorporated into and are the basis of the Climate Action Plan. In April of 2023, we initiated the Climate, the Community Advisory Group for the Climate Action Plan. We also met with the Planning Commission to provide background information on the greenhouse gas emissions and vehicle miles traveled reduction strategies. Through May, June, and July, the Community Advisory Group met and continued to discuss components of the Climate Action Plan. In August, the Community Advisory Group completed a final review of the Goals, Strategies, and Actions Matrix, that is, the backbone of the Climate Action Plan. They then also, at the very end of August, just a few weeks ago, completed review of the working draft of the Climate Action Plan and provided feedback on the layout of the plan, the content, and also made suggestions on what additions could be made. Many of those additions are being added now and will be included with the next version that is published for the September 14th Planning Commission meeting that is next Thursday. As you can see here, the Parks Commission and the Planning Commission are meeting tonight, and we're hoping to collect feedback from primarily the Parks Commission, but also the Planning Commission, to carry that into next week's meeting with the Planning Commission, which is the first official meeting in the legislative process. Following that, in October, the Planning Commission will hold a public hearing on the Climate Action Plan. Any additional changes will be made, and ideally, the Planning Commission would make a recommendation to the City Council on the document, including any final edits that they want to see added. The City Council will then pick up the Climate Action Plan in November and will review the, in a workshop setting, review the draft, provide any feedback or comments to staff and the consultant. Those will then be added. The document will again be republished, and a public hearing on the Climate Action Plan will be held, collecting public feedback and having the council provide any final direction or edit, and ideally, adoption by ordinance of the Climate Action Plan. That's the legislative process, so really, we're at the very beginning of that, which is the next phase of the Climate Action Plan development and why we're here tonight. As you saw from the last slide, there were many rounds of review and refinement of the actions and strategies included in the Climate Action Plan. In addition to the meetings on the previous slide, we engaged and are continuing to engage with stakeholders to ensure the actions in the Climate Action Plan are implementable and will lead to impacts that help achieve our goals. You can see we have a comprehensive list. We've been working internally with many of our internal stakeholders to make sure that we understand how these actions may be implemented in the city, what pitfalls they might present, what budget constraints we might be up against, what staffing constraints we might be up against. We've also been working with external stakeholders. Just today, I met with the Snoqualmie Tribe. Yesterday, I met with PSC. Late last week, I met with the Master Builders Association. We're continuing to set up meetings and work with school districts, with the water and sewer districts, to make sure that we are looking across disciplines and across, in the case of other districts, governmental entities, to ensure collaboration and that what we're trying to do here is not going to be met with resistance or barriers. We want to be successful. We also, at the same time, do not want to, as I say, embarrass the city. We don't want to set ourselves up with goals that we cannot attain, with budget that's not available, and with staffing that's not available. So when we're walking through these, we want to be mindful of the fact that there are limits on what the city can do. We do not have unlimited budget and staffing, and we also, at the same time, do not have unlimited time because this is something that is a ticking time bomb, so to speak. And we want to make sure we're able to be, to make meaningful, to implement meaningful actions that bring change in a measurable manner. So one of the reasons why we've been putting such effort into meeting with all these different stakeholders is to ensure that we have that collaboration. The Climate Action Plan is intended to be a living document that is continually reviewed and updated. One of the benefits of a living document is that it remains relevant. When we work on a planning document that gets shelved and doesn't really receive a lot of attention after that, it doesn't remain relevant in our day-to-day conversations. So we're really hoping that this is a document that will be talked about, will be revised. We might bump into things in there that we didn't get right the first time that we have opportunity to change. The Community Advisory Group that was used, the vision that the council has for the Community Advisory Group, as I understand it, is that that will be converted to a Sustainability Commission, and that in the new year, the council has interest in chartering a new commission with the city, a Sustainability Commission, setting a work plan for that commission. And the primary objective of that group will be to continue to refine and implement this Climate Action Plan once adopted. So this document will have its own Legislative Advisory Board that will be committed to advising the council on how it might be implemented going forward. We would also like to see that many of the Community Advisory Group members that have interest have priority in receiving or in their letter of interest to apply to the Sustainability Commission, as they've been part of the creation of this document and have devoted quite a bit of their time towards its creation. As you reviewed the CAP, you likely noticed that the focus areas in green have the most actions, and this is because they're, they were the primary focus of the Commerce Grant, but also because they will lead to the most measurable climate change impacts. The categories in purple are also important, but more data needs to be obtained to form a baseline for the city, and further refinement and build-out of these categories will be needed. This will also be led by the Sustainability Commission in partnership with the Sustainability So you'll notice that in the Climate Action Plan document, that these two, the Transportation and Land Use section and the Building and Energy section have had the most work put into them. They're the most robust. They have the most complete list of actions, the most complete descriptions of each action, as these are really the items that are most pressing for us to address in order to bring about a reduction in greenhouse gas emissions and vehicle miles traveled. Now that you have the background on how the draft was put together, I'm going to hand things over to Aaron with Brightworks so that the Parks Commissioners can share their feedback with the Planning Commission. Aaron?
Yeah, thank you so much, David. So the way that we're looking to facilitate feedback is through three open-ended questions. We know that the Climate Action Plan was a pretty robust document, so want to open it up, starting with the first question. I'll leave room after each question for any comments. But the first question we would like to hear from you all is, as we approach the Planning Commission's review of the draft Climate Action Plan on September 14th, what key aspects or areas do you believe the Planning Commission should prioritize and consider to ensure the Climate Action Plan aligns with the city's broader strategic vision and objectives? So we can pause here for any questions or comments.
So I don't have anything specific, but it's a very, very long list of meaningful actions. I was very impressed by the breadth and depth of it. But I think the question is, how are we going to get to prioritized actions that have the most benefit for the cost? Because if you go through the list, there is obviously a lot of staff time and hence budget that is going to take to pursue these things, and we obviously have a limited budget. So how do we get to a prioritized list that are going to be most impactful?
Yeah, I do want to point out that within the Climate Action Plan, and one element that we are continuing to evolve is our implementation matrix. So this is where we're looking to include more information on relative costs as well as relative impact, any synergies, opportunities for funding, that type of thing. So that is an element included in the appendix of the Climate Action Plan. So that is an element included in the appendix of the Climate Action Plan.
A lot of these actions require significant human change. How do we accomplish that? Is it marketing? Is it inspiration? Is it enforcement? Is it all of the above? I mean, is this a pie in the sky, or how are we going to really accomplish these things?
Yeah, it's a great question and something that's come up a lot in the development process. I think all of the examples that you noted are really great examples. There's been a lot of attention paid to the specific language within the measures. You'll see educate, advocate, incentivize, language like this used throughout the document, and I think they all play a critical role, because it has been a major topic of discussion that city actions, city objectives can only take this so far. It's going to require behavioral changes from residents, business owners, everyone within the city of Simamish. So we're looking at ways to incorporate education, incentivize change, and make it as easy as possible for those that have the most ability to impact.
I would just piggyback on that. I think one of the things that the Sustainability Commission, once it's formed, is going to be working on is developing a one-to-two-year work plan for implementation of the cap, and so that's where I see them setting some priorities, working with the City Council and the Commissions around, you know, what the focus should be in those first few years, and then also which areas of education and advocacy should be prioritized during that time. And I think they'll be working with the Sustainability Coordinator to plan that out, who I'm assuming in turn will work with our Communications Manager, and start really fleshing out what those campaigns would look like and how they would reach the public.
One, to David's point, it's important not to set unrealistic goals for ourselves, but I do think it is important that we set aggressive goals and indicate that we are taking this seriously as a city. We do hold this as, you know, a core of what we want the future of Simamish to look like. So I think that is something that we really need to keep at the forefront. And secondly, the draft mentions a dashboard, and I think that is going to be really important. I mean, obviously, the policy is the important part of what we're going to do and how we implement it, but communicating that, I think we need to make sure that we do that efficiently, cleanly, and in a way that's clear to understand, so that people understand where we are, where we're going, what we need to do to get there, and also so we can really hold ourselves accountable. I think one of the comments was, you know, here it says 2030, here it says 2050. Make sure that it's really clear what we're doing and how we get there, because I think that, in talking about buy-in, that's how we get buy-in. Make sure we're all on the same page, because I think we all want to do better. It's just figuring out how we do that efficiently.
I was wondering, one of the goals is to reduce the VMT, Vehicle Miles Traveled. If in a perfect world, everybody had an electric car, would we need to reduce the VMT? Because presumably, we wouldn't be having any emissions. So, I mean, I guess it could go in two different directions, trying to, and they probably complement each other. One is to actually reduce the numbers of miles people using other means of transportation, whether it's walking or bicycling or something, or mass transit. But also, if we were to promote the electrification of vehicles, that also accomplishes the same goal of reducing the greenhouse gases.
Yeah, that's exactly right. I think that's a really good summary of the two-prompt approach, but it is a separate goal listed in the Climate Action Plan to actually reduce vehicle miles traveled, so that is through means, some of them that you identified, biking, walking, public transportation, carpool and vanpool. And a lot of that is for the reasons you identified, to come at the issues from both sides, as well as reducing some of the externalities associated with driving cars other than greenhouse gases, so traffic congestion, safety, that type of thing. And then also, even as we move to cleaner electricity sources, we are still using some energy with electric cars, so moving towards overall efficiency, less reliance on natural resources through electricity, even if those are generated through renewable means.
Some of this does apply to the planning we try to do for parks. So we try to spread parks and parks development throughout the city, so that everyone has a walkable park they can get to. And we could, you know, make that even more of a focal point, and it has always been a focal point of our Pro Plan, so it's interesting to see these two presentations in the same evening, because they do complement each other. Should we move on?
Yes, I think also to your point, both plans talk about the accessibility, whether it's to parks or within the city, by providing trails and pathways for pedestrians and bicycles as well, and safety, making sure they're safe as well, so they overlap in that way as well.
Thank you for that comment. Sorry, I don't have a great view of if anyone else has a comment, so if, David, if you could let me know if we're ready to move on.
Okay.
One thing I do want to add to this is, as I look at this question and slide that I want to highlight for the group, is the tension between the city's Urban Forest Management Plan objectives and tree retention objectives, and also, at the same time, some of the objectives of the Climate Action Plan and electrification. And there is a slight tension between tree retention and aerial power wires, and we're going to need to be revisiting our tree rules to think a bit about how we create clear zones around power wires, and some of the challenges around grid resiliency when we have windstorms. You know, we are the recipients of many, we won't say unhappy, but at times unhappy, phone calls during windstorms about why people's power has not been restored, and how could we let this happen in the first place? So as we electrify as a city, we do want to also think about some of the challenges that we're going to be facing, where we have a bit of a conflict between our objectives with tree retention and our objectives of wanting to electrify and added dependency on our electrical grid. So I just want to put a pin in that, because I think that's a conversation that we're going to need to have as a city going forward, to make sure that we know how to manage our tree canopy, those assets, those resources in the city, and work with PSC to ensure that we have adequate clear zones around our power wires to ensure our grid is kept online during windstorms. Oh, sorry. Go ahead, Erin.
Thanks so much. Next question is just the comprehensiveness of the draft Climate Action Plan. So would like to get any comments addressing, upon review of the draft of the Climate Action Plan, have you identified any gaps or areas where information might be missing? And if so, what recommendations do you have to address these shortcomings?
I found it to be really comprehensive myself, so I'm not familiar with this particular, these particular issues, so I was really kind of overwhelmed, honestly.
I have a comment. You correct, it may have been enlisted in the plan, but I didn't necessarily see it. And that was, I know we've talked about waste reduction, specifically reuse recycle, and one of the things that some of our neighboring communities have done is to outlaw, maybe too strong a word, but styrofoam containers, takeout containers and such. I didn't see that in the plan. I saw where we talked about more recycling efforts, but I wonder if there's ways that we can actually reduce the amount of non-reusable materials that we use on a regular basis.
Yeah, some of these requirements or banning of certain products was something that we did discuss throughout. I believe at this time, we did not get into the level of detail of specific policies or materials to be banned, but I think it's a great suggestion and something that we may consider in the future.
For me, one of the things that came to mind as I was going through, especially in the Natural Resources section, I don't know if it's possible to address HOAs and requiring lawns, you know, for every single house, like, just sort of advocating for more meadowscapes within our, or natural landscapes within our yards, landscaping, that sort of thing. But other than that, this is really thorough. That was really the only thing that came to mind for me.
That's a great comment. Thank you for that feedback.
I just have a quick question about the figure, I think it's the page eight, figure three, so this is the, I think this is the greenhouse gas. So it looks like it's, let's see, 2030, right? So we can see that the short-term goal is quite aggressive, then it changed. So I'm just wondering, I'm just curious, like, how did you get the data? So based on what kind of information, so the committee then decide the goal will be look like this?
Yeah, so the figure that you see on page eight, and I can pull it up if that is helpful. Oh, thank you, Miriam. Beat me to it. Yeah, so this wedge analysis is taken directly from the Puget Sound Regional Analysis Tool provided. It's a tool provided and Excel-based tool provided as part of the K4C. So the majority of emissions reductions that you see here, especially the steeper reductions that you highlighted through year 2030, are based largely on existing state, regional, some federal initiatives. The large one you see here is the Washington Clean Energy Transformation Act. So the largest portion you see on the graph here, we are allocating those reductions to existing measures. So this is not necessarily a lot of the measures or reductions that you see, or pieces of the wedge are from existing legislation. So just that bottom portion, the kind of darker greenish-blue color, is what will be remaining to be addressed by the actions and objectives that you see in the Climate Action Plan. But just to reiterate, this is taken from a Puget Sound tool provided in conjunction with the K4C group, and all of the information here was taken from that tool and based on assumptions used in the broader region from regional, state, and federal policies that will apply to Simamish.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
I'm not sure if this is a gap necessarily, but under the Waste section, it might just be a wording thing, but I would like to see something where Simamish really takes the lead in making it clear where you can take different things to be diverted. King County has the what-do-I-do-with site, but I found a lot of those resources are out of date. So if Simamish has something specific to where you can take stuff in Simamish or the surrounding municipalities, I think that would be really helpful.
That's a great comment. Thank you for that feedback.
So before we switch to the next slide, I just wanted to highlight that there is an attachment that Mr. Ritter also pointed out to the Agenda Bill on this topic this evening, that we call outstanding comments from the Community Advisory Group. And these were comments that, as staff, we did not see resonated or made it to the top of the list of priorities that the CAG was working on, but these are things that we wanted to make sure that the Commissions and Council were aware of, so that if any of you wanted to advocate for that to be added or changed. If it doesn't say that it's being added as part of the legislative process, if there's something that you see in there that you think is of high value and should be carried forward, definitely after the meeting, you know, through the rest of the week, feel free to send us an email and identify that, hey, I think this is something that should be definitely considered for inclusion. And we wanted to make sure that those things that were raised by the Community Advisory Group that didn't necessarily make it to the top of the list were carried forward, and that the legislative bodies had opportunity to read that list and have the opportunity to bring it to the surface if they felt like it was something that we should continue to consider in adding to the draft plan. So just wanted to draw your attention to that. Feel free to follow up after this meeting with, you know, additional information, or if you want to reach out and talk through them, we're happy to do that as well.
I know the Planning Commission is supposed to be listening and not talking, but I'm going to talk anyway. So one thing that I struggled with in reviewing this, and the reason I bring this up is, under two, you kind of said shortcomings. This could be my shortcoming, but sometimes when I have a question, other people have a question as well. It seems like the glaring issue, and it's on, oh, what page is this? Page 10, the residential natural gas use and the conflict with our goal. It doesn't feel to me like the plan or the way this is written, maybe that's the way to say it, addresses that in enough of a clear manner or head-on. I mean, I can see the problem, but it doesn't feel like the plan acknowledges that that's a major conflict in our goal here. Now, maybe I misread it, but I've read through it a couple times, trying to find, you know, a more clear acknowledgement that this is an issue, and what are we going to do about it, or we don't know what we're going to do about it. I don't quite follow that. It feels to me like a standout item within the plan that needs more either communication or thought or something. So am I reading that wrong? Is there some magic bullet buried further down, or what's the situation on that particular topic?
Yeah, thank you for that feedback. I think it's very valuable to hear how it's being read, and we want to make sure that that is a highlight. So I think with that feedback, we could take another pass at it and make sure to highlight just how pressing or at the top of the priorities natural gas is. The graphic on the left-hand side is meant to demonstrate the reductions from, similar to the wedge, the existing state, regional, federal policies, and what it's showing us is that those will not be addressed, or the natural gas emissions will not be addressed. So I think making it more clear that that should be a primary focus of Simamish's actions is a great point and something we can look to incorporate in the next draft.
Okay, thanks. And you'll probably hear the same comment from me again next week, just to warn you.
You'll also note in the Community Advisory Group Letter of Recommendation that one of the points that was raised by the group is a desire for some clarity on this topic, and why the natural gas bar on the graphic, that graphic that was shown, is not shown as being reduced, and that has a lot to do with PSC's forecasts, because this data is drawn from PSC's forecasts. So we're going to have to work very closely with PSC to develop a strategy to bring that bar down to match the red line trajectory, and that's one of our bigger challenges, is that a majority of our homes are connected to natural gas and is the primary heating source for those homes, which goes hand-in-hand with my prior comment about the grid resiliency and the challenge with trying to bolster and increase the capacity of our electrical grid while also having conflict with trees related to storms. So there are some things we're going to have to work through as a community to get to that point. We're tracking them. This is a good starting point. But again, you know, I feel like the Community Advisory Group did a really good job trying to highlight the delicate dance that we're doing around the topic of gas connection. connections and that as a primary energy source and how we might convert to electrification over time. And the other big one that we all want to keep an eye on is the use of language mandate versus the use of language prioritize versus language incentivize natural gas, or excuse me, electrification. And that is, do we have the legal ability to mandate people who are building a new home or who are going through a major home renovation or remodel, the ability to, or do we have the ability to require them to cut the gas connection in favor of converting their mechanical equipment in their home to purely electrical mechanical equipment? It depends on where you want to land on the wedge diagram. And we will be more successful in succeeding in meeting the wedge diagram if we are able to mandate that and if the community goes along with it. But, you know, as we well know, what's the saying, a culture eats strategy for breakfast. If you try to require something and people push back, you will fail in your implementation and ultimately will not meet the goal. So we need to be very careful in balancing our approach with outreach, education, helping people achieve the goal that the city set them on to achieve. So thank you for listening to that. I just want to make sure that that's something that the Community Advisory Group talked a lot about and was really important to them is, in order to be successful, we have to have a strong foundation and we have to bring people along and make sure they understand the problem and the various solutions that they have to fix the problem.
Has Seattle mandated electrification in all new construction?
Maybe with commercial, I'm not quite sure. I know that we were facing some legal challenges on the West Coast, primarily first out of Berkeley, where there was a federal court case that was brought against the city of Berkeley, because the city of Berkeley was requiring that commercial spaces migrate from gas to electric mechanical equipment. The state, Washington State Building Code Council, with this last round of code updates that were due to be in effect on July 1st, ended up withdrawing that effective date and pushing it out because there was pending litigation. I have to study the current state of affairs on this, but pending litigation against the State Building Code Council, I want to say, I'm not exactly sure. The point is, is that there was a legal cloud put on the state's ability to mandate electrification of mechanical equipment through the building code. And that, there were, there were appellants that were arguing that it was a federal law that basically preempted local jurisdictions from making consumer choices for consumers. I'd have to go back to exactly what it was, but the general gist was, is we were not confident, we still are not 100% confident that we can mandate electrification. We're continuing to study it. My understanding is that the litigation has been withdrawn. I do need to look more closely at that. I have heard that the master builders are now tending to side on the side of electrification, which is a good sign that, that maybe we will be able to start to mandate electrification. But I think the question comes, is what is the right size? Is it, is mandating electrification with new construction acceptable? Probably so. Is mandating electrification with a sizable home addition acceptable? Probably so. Is mandating electrification with a sizable home renovation without expansion? Questionable. Is mandating electrification with life cycle replacement without renovation of home on mechanical equipment? Probably not. But one thing that we also want to highlight, and I'm sorry to take time on this, this is a really important topic, is, is if, we all need to think about the implications of mandating electrification of, one of the most common gas appliances, a hot water tank in your home, and what implication that brings. That typically happens at an inconvenient time, and you're left without hot water, possibly in the winter. And if you're required to electrify your hot water tank, what that requires is that you first have to add a new circuit to your panel, and you have to run wire to the location of a hot water tank to tie in your tank. And that brings up a question in your panel of whether you have adequate capacity in your panel for another circuit. And if you do, that then brings up the question about whether or not your electric meter has adequate capacity, the electric meter that PSC has put in. And if that doesn't, then that brings, if that does, then that brings up the question of whether or not the underbuild and the local distribution line that feeds to a transformer has adequate capacity to support that. And that then brings up the question of whether or not, if there are, you know, several thousand homes on one line, whether or not that transmission line that provides the power to that location has adequate capacity, which then brings up the question of whether or not we have adequate substation capacity. So you get the point that there's a lot of planning that has to go into this, and if we're going to electrify, we need to understand rollout, how it all fits together, work closely with PSC, make sure that people have access to electricians at a reasonable rate to do the work, et cetera. So it's a big thing.
You know, though, I am optimistic, because I remember as a child, the fire-breathing dragon in the basement of our home in Seattle and the oil tank out in front. And my parents, so much as long since turned over, is all electric now. You know, all appliances. It's been 50 years, but I am optimistic that we can make a change. And I'm thinking back, how did everybody get convinced to fill their oil tanks, to get rid of the fire-breathing dragon? Somehow we were convinced that, gee, gas is clean, it's efficient. Can we get the same message across as we move to electrification? I think we can, right? Can't we?
Well, it's a two-edged, you know, it's a double-edged sword on there, because I live in a house where, every year, I love PSC, because I used to work there. I lose power for like four to five times a year, especially in the wintertime when there's a storm. And I have aging parents that live with me. I'm okay with it, because I have fireplace that runs on gas and stove that works, and I have hot water. And then we have those torch lights, we're like happy. But if we mandate that I go electrify, you know, if PSC doesn't change that and they don't promise that, hey, we're not going to have power cuts, then I'll be okay. But if not, you know, as a resident, I'll have a hard time.
Absolutely.
So it's, even though I would like to go there, but, you know, you have to look at the logistics too.
Absolutely.
But Seattle, they're not going to have power cuts, because it's all underground.
Right.
Sammamish, we have like overhead, yeah.
Well, that's something to think about, isn't it? How do we, how do we manage our supply, now that we need to work with PSC on?
There's a lot of working with PSC to be had in the future.
We use Bluetooth to get electricity that way.
Hey, wonderful. I'll move on to the third question that we have for you all. That's focused on key priorities and outcomes. So what are the three or so most pivotal initiatives or strategies within the plan that, in your view, can drive the most substantial and measurable impacts for the community in the upcoming decade?
I would like to see us push solar. We have added solar panels to the top of our house, as well as a battery, not a gas backup, battery backup. And we are really surprised at the results of how independent we can be with our solar panels, even in the winter. So I would like to see us really push solar. And in our, I understand that of fire stations, we're going to add solar to. I think the city can be a role model, and it's in the plan, you know, for residents with the addition of solar. So that's my, that's a priority in my mind.
Do we know, do we know that technology is advanced enough that if you switch to the solar, you're going to be able to provide enough power to run your system? Now, we're talking about in a city that we have a lot of trees and not that much of, we can see clear skies and sunshine and all that with all the rain. So you said that you have had this in your case and you're...
I live in a location that's really ideal for solar. This is going to have to be selective, that's for sure. I can think of some of the fire stations, they have, they have good locations for solar. Mary Piggott, you know, her house there at Big Rock South, it has, she has solar panels on her garage, which we can use to power those and serve as a role model. So I mean, if you're asking for a priority, I think where we can, we should encourage solar and battery backup versus gas, Generac backups. So that's what I would do. It's expensive.
I have a question for Aaron. If I remember right, from our January briefing at the Planning Commission, PSC's electrification is only something like 30% renewable. So wouldn't the largest impact, which means, by the way, our EVs are not 100% clean energy, because the electricity's not, would not the biggest impact be moving PSC to more renewable?
Yeah, that's a great point. There are two things, again, that must be done in conjunction. The reason we favor electricity or electrification, even in instances where the grid is comparable to natural gas, is that it is, in most cases, always improving. So electricity does have the option to be becoming more renewable all the time, where natural gas is pretty stagnant. And moving towards more clean fuels on the PSC grid is another part of the plan, it's another part of the strategies that we have outlined. It's also part of the Washington Clean Energy Act, I believe, which is setting goals to have 100% a clean electricity supply within the state of Washington. So it's not perfect now, but it is increasing, and we hope to see it continue to increase in the future for PSC and Washington at large.
I think a key initiative would be TLU 4.3, which is collaborate with regional transit service providers to advocate for and promote delivery of safe, connected, convenient, equitable, and affordable transit options. I think if we, if we consider what Sammamish looks like in the future, making transit affordable, efficient, and convenient really has a big effect on, you know, what Sammamish looks like, how we get around, and quality of life. I think if there's one thing to focus on, that would definitely be my top three.
Slot right here, which is our wrap-up slide. We thank you all for joining us tonight. You talked about the Climate Action Plan. You can see here that the next meeting is on September 14th, that's next Thursday. The Planning Commission will be taking this up. Is it the only item on the agenda? Yeah, so we do have a full evening to talk about this plan. As I stated, if you do find anything in the plan later, or if you wake up in the middle of the night thinking, hey, I've got this comment, you know, feel free to send us, send us an email or reach out, give us a call. Happy to talk through this, any questions you might have, or any of the different pages in the plan. And, you know, definitely could carry those comments to the Planning Commission next week and continue to comment down the line.
I do have a couple of questions that didn't fit into the three questions on the screen. The first one is, have we factored in population growth into the planning? Because obviously, if population growth goes up more than we anticipate, then the numbers become much harder to hit.
Yeah, population growth is factored into the wedge analysis graphic that we were showing. So that shows the baseline continuing to rise over time. That is based on population growth. Those are estimates taken from Puget Sound Regional and the K4C collaboration as well.
Great, thank you. The second question is, do we have good methods for accurately measuring greenhouse gas emissions? So are we comfortable that we're going to know when we're hitting our targets or not?
Yeah, I think, and I might let the city folks answer as well, but in terms of the methodology used for the buildings and energy, as well as what we're, how we're looking to revise transportation, it is feasible to track over time in terms of a plan to measure on a regular basis. I can't speak to that part as much. I don't know, David, if you have a comment there.
Yeah, so we're, it's calculated, right? So it's not that we're measuring each individual unit, we're instead understanding how many pieces of a certain type of equipment there are, what the emission might be, and calculating it out that way. We will continue to pull data on that. For example, one of the outstanding comments from the Community Advisory Group was making sure we have a strong understanding of the land card types in the city.
We are working on that and, interesting. We are working on that, where we're pulling data from the state to address internal combustion engine, internal combustion hybrid, internal combustion hybrid plug-in, and electric vehicles. And we're going to be using that baseline going forward, and that will be added to the draft fairly soon. We're in the process of doing that. So we will continue to work on best science. One of the benefits of having a living document like this is that we can work with the Sustainability Commission to understand what data points they might want to see going forward to help measure our success, and we can identify how to get that data. At times, we might find that it is available, readily available from the state, the county, Puget Sound Regional Council. At times, we might find that we actually need to customize a data report or have somebody do a study to figure out what that is. But that's a, that's a council decision whether or not they want to fund that, because that does come out of city budget.
Thank you. I guess the last comment I'd make is, I think that probably the reason you weren't getting a lot of feedback on priorities, for example, is because there's so many actions in there that it's really, you know, without any data behind them, it's really hard to say off the top of your head, here's the ones that are going to be the most impactful. So I think, you know, that's a lot of the work going forward, is to literally determine what is going to be most impactful, that is worth spending our time and money on.
And one of the things we're doing is working on the implementation component. We're continuing to work on that, and that will, again, be a living document, where we're going to learn. There'll be new ways of measuring things or doing things to be more successful. And we're, one of the benefits of having a living document is to continually try to do better.
Is it too late to, is it too late to add a couple of more questions and see if we can get answers? Question number one, David, if you recall, as a part of the first time or second time that we discussed it at the Planning Commission, I brought up the question of, are we looking into short-term and a long-term, right, and focusing everything on seven years from now, 2030? Do we have some strategies that we can work on and develop that, that addresses the issues and kind of reach goals and objectives in a short period of time, maybe two or three years? Is that something possible? Or maybe Aaron can respond?
So my, my understanding is that with the implementation plan, that there is, there are strategies that are, or excuse me, actions that are more readily available off the shelf that we can start to implement immediately. But there are some that require work planning, budgeting, staffing, that require partnerships. And partnerships don't happen overnight. They do take time and effort to sustain. So we'll be starting to work on those partnerships. We're already working on them with the outreach that we're doing with this plan, you know, making sure that our counterparts are aware of what we're doing and that they're identifying any major roadblocks or problems with our approach.
Second question, can I follow up on Chris's question? Chris asked about the population growth. How about the land use change? Are we, are we looking at the land use change as a basis for developing 2030 Climate Action Plan? Or what is the land use scenario under Climate Action Plan?
So Aaron, I don't know what, to what... So, Erin, I don't know what, to what degree you looked at land use as part of the modeling?
Yeah, so land use is considered at the county level for the wedge analysis. So, projections for future development are taken into consideration. Primarily, some of the regional and state measures that we saw are applicable to only new construction. So, that's where you'll see those come into play. In terms of land use change, it wasn't an independent category of emissions assessed for Samamish. And that was based on collaboration with city staff and an understanding of future plans, meaning primarily that there, to our knowledge, was not any major plans for changes in land use type. So, that would be something like going from residential to agricultural, or from commercial to agricultural, vice versa, that type of thing. So, in terms of actual land use, since we saw pretty consistent land use zoning and designations, we didn't examine that as an independent category of emissions.
So, that means that you didn't look at the possible change in zoning, as well as the land use that the city is now considering as a part of the comprehensive plan?
Not through the lens of greenhouse gas modeling. It will be something that we would take into consideration as we measure emissions over time. But there's not, we didn't do a specific scenario analysis based on specific zoning changes within the city.
So, David, as far as the staff, how would you address that issue once the plan is developed? Which is what I'm hearing, is that the assumption that went into preparing a Climate Action Plan is based on the regional land use assumptions, not the local. So, how are we going to deal with it at the local level?
I think through implementation, and to some degree, counting widgets. So, you know, making sure that we know there are some assumptions around development and redevelopment, and understanding what those forecasts are, and then dashboarding that to see that it's actually following our forecast. The real change that is, the opportunity for change is in gas to electric, as you saw with the graph that was pulled up, I think on page 10. Maybe that was the page. And where it showed the, where we need to be with the red line, but it showed the natural gas consumption. And so, through development and redevelopment, there's opportunity to bring that change, right? It's when new units come online and they're electric, as opposed to being gas, or when there are major renovations that are brought online, that are electric instead of where they were gas. We, and we understand how many of those will happen over how many years, we can start to get an understanding of what effect that might have. I do see Miriam has raised her hand.
I was just going to add, we do have some measures in the land use section around density and focusing density, and creating more walkable centers, more access to services. So, I think there are components of the land use that we're discussing for the comp plan that are integrated here.
And my last question to Erin is that, do you have some success story that you can share with us, that the other jurisdictions they have done, and they have reached some kind of tangible goals that they developed in their action, Climate Action Plan? Other cities?
Yeah, I would say, without naming a specific city, or thinking of a specific city, where we have seen success is closely measuring and monitoring over time. So, being, tracking progress, and doing studies on what is working, and what is not working, and being willing and able to pivot in short time or in real time, based on what is working. So much of climate action planning is based on projections, and projections are not necessarily accurate or true stories. They're our best guess at a moment in time. So, keeping live data and changing as we go provides incredible insight into how these strategies, and how these specific actions are taking shape, and the ripple effect that they're having. Another interesting thing I'll mention is just any research or pilots into new technologies, things that may be kind of up-and-coming technologies that the city may examine, kind of thinking outside the box, in terms of new transportation programs, new technologies, you know, outside of the typical solar, that type of thing, technologies that may not be as advanced yet. It is interesting and exciting to see cities putting resources into programs such as that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think we're ready to wrap up, wrap this up, then. We really thank you for your hard work on this important subject. It made me really feel hopeful to see the city tackling these difficult issues. So, that's great. I would echo Chris's comment, that there's a certain elegance in simplicity. We're a little unwieldy here. And maybe it will be more able to be understood and accepted if it's a little simpler. And I can see some of that probably is underway. But when we get too much opinion in, it becomes more unwieldy. So, we lay it on you guys to cut to the chase and pick the best, the best options, that will give us the biggest bang for the buck. Right? Yeah, that's what we want. So, again, thank you for your important work.
Thank you all so much.
So, we're going to go on to the Prose Plan, then, is that right?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you so much.
All right, well, good evening again, commissioners, planning commissioners, and park commissioners. For the record, again, I'm Anjali Meyer, Director of Parks Recreation and Facilities. Your next topic is the 2024 Parks Recreation and Open Space Plan update. And while I have the floor, I did want to take a quick minute and acknowledge the effort of staff on both the community developments team, as well as Parks and Recreation, and Rich's team at the back of the room. Rich is at the back of the room. It takes a little more effort to put together these joint meetings, right from room setup, and just getting it all prepared. So, thank you to everyone for that heavy lift. And it's really, tonight is really important, because we get to share with you survey results. Every time we do a Parks Recreation and Open Space Plan update, we do an extensive community outreach, in the way of virtual open houses, in-person open houses. In fact, there's one on tonight, in the lobby outside, and trying to get people from the farmer's market to come in and weigh in. So, there's many avenues to get that input. Tonight, our consultant Steve Do from Conservation Techniques will be focusing on the statistically valid survey and the online survey. Steve does a lot of these updates for many cities in Washington. In fact, he also worked on the update of our 2018, our current Prose Plan. So, he's very familiar with Samamish. And he has a couple of consultants he works with, Consor for Public Outreach, who, again, are out in the lobby, as well as MXM Landscape, that has done a site assessment. So, again, every six years, we go out into our parks and kind of evaluate the condition. So, you'll hear a little bit about that. And finally, we get to share with you some draft goals. So, again, tonight's really important for us, because we get to give you this context, particularly the Planning Commission, because the next time we'll come back is with a draft plan. And then, finally, the timing of this Prose Plan is great, because the comprehensive plan is also undergoing an update. And we will be working closely with community development on the parks chapter, on the parks element of the comprehensive plan, so that both documents are talking to each other. In fact, the Prose Plan is a piece of the comprehensive plan. So, with that introduction, I will hand it over to my team. And Janie Walzer, I do have to introduce my staff team. Janie Walzer is a management analyst in the Parks and Recreation Department, and she's doing a great job managing all the pieces of this project. And she's not doing this alone. We have Shelby Peralt, Parks Project Manager, who is working closely with her, and will also focus on the capital improvement plan, and what projects will make it on that list. Shelby is in the lobby, working with Consor right now. And Kevin Teague, our Deputy Director, oversees all park planning. So, he will make sure that the capital improvement plan has projects that his team can actually execute, and that we have enough revenues to build. So, with that, over to you, Janie.
Thank you. Okay. So, tonight, as we go through our presentation, these are the things that we're asking of you. First is just to listen and review all of the work that we've performed to date. It's going to be a lot of information to take in, so feel free to ask questions, or if you need clarification. And the second item is to provide feedback on how best to communicate our findings. And that is, if something is really interesting, you think we should call it out and highlight it in our plan, we'd love to know. Or if something's confusing, you think we're not explaining it the best, there might be a better way to explain it, or we need to rephrase something. We also would love to hear that feedback. So, we're going to give an overview of our Prose Plan. Our parks commissioners are very familiar, but for our planning commissioners, this will give you an introduction and get you up to speed, so we're all on the same page moving forward. And then Steve will go over a summary of the site assessment that our subconsultant did earlier this spring. He's also going to review our community survey results, and then draft goals. And we'll talk about next steps, and get you guys out of here. So, our Parks Recreation Open Space Plan is a document, as Anjali said, we update every six years. And it's really our guiding document for Parks Recreation Facilities. It informs us how we should best maintain and enhance our parks, and it's grounded in a robust community engagement effort that we do. So, it's really driven by the community, and parks are for the community. It's a policy and strategy guide, also feeds into our CIP, our Park CIP. So, what we hear from the community, projects that they think should be prioritized, we match that with our CIP, and use that for the next six years. It's also a communications tool, so this plan gets sent to the state of Washington, RCO, Recreation and Conservation Office, so anybody can look into Samamish and see what we're up to. It's also a way for us to tell our council, community, and beyond, what we worked on the last six years, and what we're planning to do in the six years to come. Some highlights from 2018, the last time we did our update, there's been an athletic field study. We heard from the community that we need more athletic fields. So, we've been, completed that effort, and now we're upgrading some of those fields for them. We restriped some tennis courts, so now there's pickleball striping for the community, and also some skate park repairs and expansion, just right out front here. On the programming and event side, the Beaver Lake Lodge is now available for senior programming. We send out a summer, spring, summer, and fall recreation guides to let the community know what community events are coming up, and also give our partners the opportunity to advertise their programs for kids, if they have summer camps, things like that. We also installed a permanent sculpture in the traffic circle on Southeast Fourth Street. And then, from the just parks habitat, open space side, we acquired approximately 65 acres of land, opened a new park, Big Rock Park Central, and that's where the treehouse is. And lastly, installed a wayfinding system for parks wayfinding. So, if you're driving through the city, you see a blue sign that has the name of a park in an arrow. That was an effort that came out of our 2018 plan. It's a one-year-length effort, so pretty fast, started in January. We hope to have council approval of the final plan in December. And you'll see the top four lines, five really, are community engagement efforts. A survey, community meetings, as Anjali said, one is taking place tonight, just outside. We've been tabling, so meeting community where they are. We went to Rickapalooza, Earth Day, so setting up there and getting their feedback while they're in our park system. Also had stakeholder discussions, so more small group discussions. We ask a lot of follow-up questions, get really into depth of what those groups were thinking. And then, we've also met with the Parks Commission. So, we've had a couple of touchpoints with them. Tonight is one of them, and our Planning Commission is here as well. And we will also be bringing the draft plan to you guys very soon, to review, and Planning Commission, you as well. So, between now, November, and December, I think you're going to see a lot of me bringing this plan to you. And then, we'll have it passed, hopefully, in December. So, now I'll pass it over to Steve.
Thank you, and good evening, Commissions. Again, my name's Steve Do, Conservation Techniques. And before I get started, I just want to commend you all for the heroic effort of going through so many plans this year. So, with the comprehensive plan, the Climate Action Plan, this plan, and several others, you have your work cut out for you. So, thank you for finding the time and patience to work with us through the Parks Recreation Open Space Plan. So, as Janie mentioned tonight, want to hit on a few elements of the work that goes into the Prose Plan. One piece of that is site assessment work. And one of the early tasks we did was to have our team of landscape architects visit all the parks, open space, and trails to do a visual assessment of current condition, quality, care and maintenance, as well as look for opportunities to make site improvements, opportunities to insert a new element, if possible, and also look at kind of the age and need for renovation and repair for the whole system. So, it's a system-wide look. It's a very quick review. It occurred only over a couple of days. It happened in the spring of this year. It happened to be on a dry day, but it followed rain. So, we saw some impacts of rain on facilities, and we'll note that here shortly. The core focus for tonight really is to touch on a few elements regarding those site assessments, accessibility, playability, durability, and a sense of place. So, with regard to accessibility, think of this in terms of who can use the parks and open space, and how do they access them? So, accessibility for the Samamish park system is generally quite good. There are a number of older parks that do have some barriers to access, and those barriers take the form of curb cuts that might not be provided to limit access for people who have mobility needs to get into a park. Things like the play surfacing not being fluffed, and providing inadequate fall surface, or just having major gaps and cracks in pavement or other surface materials. So, those sorts of things create barriers. And our team noted those on a site-by-site basis, and compiled a whole set of notes for all of this that will be represented in the Prose Plan update. One thing to note is that our work is built on national guidelines for ADA access for outdoor recreation. But we also learned a lot, and utilized the city's ADA transition plan as kind of a jumping-off point for looking over the overall park system. So, the city has an ADA transition plan in place, and will continue to chip away at these issues of barriers and access over time. One thing to note, just in the graphics, since they're on-screen, that top graphic is Northeast Samamish Park. And here, we have an area where the playground has a ramp into the play area, and it's adjacent to some asphalt. But if you can tell, there's a gap between the asphalt and the concrete, and that creates a barrier. So, these are the sorts of things we noted during our assessments. And in the lower image is East Samamish Park. And here, it's asphalt parking area, but it lacks travel aisle, striping, and other indications on where to park and how to manage the space. So, again, we looked at some fine-level detail, and we will compile it all in summary material for the plan. Regarding playability, think of this as the utility of the space. How are people using it, and what are those conditions? Overall, Samamish's park system has a nice variety of play structures, playground equipment. Some of those are older, and will need to be replaced in time. And fortunately, the city has a good program of looking at those play equipment areas and planning for those replacements. So, that will be part of the capital improvement plan for the Prose Plan. Additionally, as playgrounds get updated and improved, access into and access around those play areas will be addressed to improve utility, as well as make sure that they're barrier-free. So, right now, many of the playgrounds have engineered wood fiber, woodchips, basically, that are an accessible element, but do require a certain level of maintenance. that are an accessible element, but do require a certain level of maintenance to make sure that they're fluffed and provide the fall safety surfacing that is adequate to make sure nobody gets hurt. They have to get refreshed annually, and you know, as under swings, they get kicked out of the way. I'm sure you've all seen and experienced that. Additionally, through the site assessments, again, because we were out there following a rain event, we noticed puddling in certain areas of playfields and drainage issues. So again, those sorts of details will come through in the plan on a site-by-site set of recommendations to look at drainage improvements and opportunities to transition grass fields to synthetic turf fields. Durability, another category here, think in terms of maintenance and operations. So for durability of the park system, things that were in our view included the standardization of park amenities, things like benches, tables, trashcans, things that a user might not pay too much attention to, but an operations and maintenance professional who's taking care of these properties is paying attention to, because when they need to get replaced, it's helpful to have inventory or be able to access inventory to replace those. So over time, ensuring some level of systematic replacement and standardization of those basic pieces would be required. And in doing that, also looking to make sure that site design is maintenance-friendly. So by that, I mean looking at, for example, the shelter in this picture, that is a lovely space, but it's very difficult to get equipment in to clean the roof or access around that play area. So having a design that can accommodate the needs of the maintenance staff and making sure that the properties are cared for and managed over time is definitely important, and it's something that the city is currently doing through the new master plans that they've engaged in. Additionally, some elements require special inspections, like playgrounds, but also piers and docks and decking areas. So you know, sometimes that requires specialized assessments, and again, that would come through in the new pros plan. Last is with regard to the sense of place. How do you feel as you go to all of the different parks and open spaces across Sammamish? And are they all the same, or are all they somewhat unique and interesting in their own right? For one piece of the overall system with regard to signage, the city's done a great job in having clear identification signs across the city to indicate where the parks are. And that's been an improvement since the prior plan in 2018. And the next step will be to continue that momentum and continue to address signage at the space inside the parks, to let people know how to find different elements, or specifically with trails, to know trail difficulty, trail distance, those sorts of things, to let the user have a sense of knowing what to expect when they arrive at a park property. Additionally, having parks that are unique to their space, so they reflect their natural environment, is an important facet. And again, the city's done a great job with the recent master plans to make improvements over time. But really, think about the unique differences between the city's parks for, let's say, lower Sammamish Commons and Beaver Lake. Very different spaces, they evoke different sorts of reactions from folks, and they create different kinds of outdoor experiences. So having that variety will also come through in the notion of expanding the type of recreation opportunities that are provided by the city, whether it's through additional pickleball or another off-leash area, or different types of playgrounds, as older playgrounds get replaced, to have, say, you know, net structures or all-inclusive, all-abilities spaces that are for play for all ages. So these are the sorts of things that we took into consideration as we inventoried the city's properties. So that's a lot of information, so just kind of keep that in mind. And I'm gonna transition into just a real quick overview of some of the highlights from the survey summary, or from the community survey. So to recap, the city did a community-wide survey in the spring, and it went from late March to late May, so about eight weeks. And it was a survey that was conducted as dual surveys, effectively. There was a mail-out survey to 2,500 households, that was a print-mail survey, and then there was an online community-wide survey. Two different data sets, we siloed the data, there was no cross-contamination. And it was also available in four languages, trying to reach out to the diversity of the Sammamish community. In all, we had just over 760 responses in total, and you can see the numbers on the screen. 450 came from the random sample mail survey, and that represented 18% response rate. So quite strong response rate for the mail survey, and also, on top of that, another 300-plus from the online-only survey. So for this data, we've aggregated the two surveys, and we'll share some of that information now. So in terms of kind of the demographic responses, the color in orange represents the survey responses, and the blue is the city's population based on census information. And you can see that the survey responses did skew a little bit to older individuals, and that, from our experience, is not uncommon, especially when we're doing a mail survey. Mail surveys tend to skew to older populations. Like myself, I like getting mail, so I kind of enjoy doing print surveys. But on the flip side is having the online version available, the online-only version skewed younger and also to households with kids. So between the two, we were able to capture a nice cross-section of the Sammamish community. In terms of the household information, one demographic question was about whether the household has children under 18, and about a little over 50% of overall responses were households without children in the house. And you can see in the graph that the survey data between the mail and the online tracked pretty nicely between the households that had children, whether it's one, two, or three. Just as a frame of reference, about 50% of the households do have, according to census, one or more children in the house. So again, our survey data does align pretty nicely with census data, and it is a good representation. In terms of the actual statistics from the survey, one lovely takeaway is that nearly everybody who took the survey, and again, that's over 700 respondents, feels that parks and recreation are either essential or important to the quality of life in Sammamish. You can see in the bar chart on the bottom that that skews quite heavily toward essential. So that's a great place to start, and it's somewhat consistent with prior survey, and it's a little bit higher than what we've seen in surveys from peer communities in the Puget Sound area. So we've typically seen, you know, low 90s, mid 90s, but you know, once you're getting close to 100, you can't do much wrong with that. So you should be proud of the fact that the community enjoys and appreciates parks and recreation. With regard to visitation, we had a question in there about how often do you go out to parks and open spaces? And 85% visit at least monthly. You can see in the chart how that breaks down. So a lot of respondents, 53% visit at least weekly, so that's quite strong. And as a side note, another question from the survey was about whether your usage of parks and open spaces increased after COVID, or since COVID. And a majority said that their usage had increased. And if we look at the prior survey, we got...
That's a hidden slide.
Never mind.
I can pull it up?
No, it's all right. So from the survey we did in 2018, we had a similar question just for tracking purposes, and usage did increase, or visitation did increase in the current survey over the 2018 survey, where in 2018 it was about 83%. But we did see a nice correlation between the increase in usage and the response to that question about getting out more post-pandemic. And in looking at some of the reasons why people go to parks and open spaces, trails, right there at the top, 86%. And again, from our experience in working in other jurisdictions around this area, as well as across the West Coast, this is no surprise to me. Trails consistently rank as the most important reason why people are out. Also, it consistently ranks as the top amenity of interest, having trails and having connectivity. So 86% here is quite strong. And then going down the list, you see relaxation, you see exercise events, dog walking playgrounds. Again, as a side note, some of these activities did increase in reasons for visiting over the 2018 survey. Specifically, trails, fitness, and athletic fields all increased from the 2018 time period. With regard to events, one of the things we saw in the 2018 pros plan was a strong desire by the community to provide for more events and have more activities, and through the effort of the city and through its partnerships, more events were provided, and it shows in the data that people are coming out to parks for that reason. So the corollary, why do you not visit? So this question, or the response to this question, is one where you have to kind of take it with a grain of salt, because nearly half of the respondents said, "This doesn't apply to me because we go so often." So we've got a much smaller data set to work with, but it's still valuable information because it tells us a little about some of those latent demands that exist within the park system. So, for example, one in five say there's not enough parking, and I'm sure that some of you recognize that there's a demand for parking at your parks. Also, having property or parks be too crowded and not knowing what's offered, and that one in particular is interesting because it relates to communications and making sure that people have a way to find out what's out there, as well as making sure that the website and other city communications tools push information to say what's happening, where to go, what's available, and those things. And the city has done great to provide some of that on the website, especially as it's transitioned in the last year. But letting folks know what is out there will help bridge getting more people to the parks and the open spaces. One of the questions in the survey asked about priorities related to a whole host of potential amenities of interest. So the survey offered 27 different things, where we basically said, "Is this a top priority, high priority, not a priority, et cetera?" So this graphic simply shows the top four recreation priorities out of that list of 27. And here again, you can see trails at the top in terms of overall priority, and nearly 90% think it's either top or high. And again, consistent with regional and statewide and national data, but also consistent with the prior question about why people are getting out to parks. So internal consistency with the questions is always nice to see, and this survey showed that. Additionally, important amenities include restrooms in the parks, as well as having lifeguards at Pine Lake, and still a strong interest in community events. On the other end of the spectrum, some of the lower priorities include indoor space for soccer, disc golf, sand volleyball, cricket. And this is not to say that these facilities or amenities are not needed or of interest, it's just that when you ask the broader public, they may fall lower on the list because some of those other activities, like trails and playgrounds and just having events, are all ages, all abilities, bring out the family, and are general. Whereas some of these other amenities are very specialized, very single-purpose, and we saw in the full data set...
That's a hidden slide.
We have another hidden slide that we can't show you. In the full data set of 27, which is in a survey summary, which we can share later, it clearly shows that as you go to more specialized or single-use-type activities, whether it's tennis or basketball or even off-leash areas, they do fall lower down the list in terms of overall community priority. So a different way to get at priority was to do a forced rank question, where we said, "Here's six things, rank them one to six in terms of priority." And in this graphic, we're splitting them between the online responses and the mail responses. The top two were the same between both data sets: maintain existing facilities and develop trail connections. So again, trails, right there at the top. The online version does skew a little more toward interest in trails, but in both cases, those top two are still the top two. And that gives us strong direction going forward. So again, internal consistency, especially with the trails, questions that the trails are of a strong interest for the community. Looking beyond that, improving and upgrading city parks and developing currently undeveloped parks are the next two in line. And then the last are also the same between the two data sets. And just as a frame of reference, when we did the survey in 2018, the top priority at that time was to buy more land for parks and open space, followed by maintain, followed by improve what you have, followed by develop new stuff. So the priorities have shifted a little bit between 2018 and 2023. That's what year it is, right? I forget sometimes, sorry. And these priorities will be reflected in the pros plan in terms of the types of projects that get put in the capital improvement plan and how those get sequenced over time over the next six-year window. And just finally, on the survey, with regard to land acquisition, since it was a priority in the 2018 plan, wanted to re-ask the question in this cycle, and basically wanted to see where priority lied for types of acquisitions. So the community had a strong interest in preserving habitat and providing for those passive recreation spaces that could include trails and wildlife viewing, and then down the list to active use and small neighborhood parks beyond that. So again, even though the priorities have shifted according to the community, there still may be gaps in the park system where people are traveling too far to get to a park, or that acquisitions may be needed for parks or for trail connections. Again, those will come through in the kind of prioritization process for the capital plan. So all of this information helped lend itself to a refresh of the goals and objectives. So the 2018 plan had a series of eight goals, and we went through, worked with staff to assess those goals and objectives, refresh them, and provide, tonight for you, kind of a high-level snapshot of where we are with those. So goal one is with regard to engagement promotions, so basically making sure that the public's involved in all things parks and recreation, whether it's through site master plan designs, like the city's recently done, like we're doing tonight as part of this process, but also acknowledging the Park and Recreation Commission as the forum for talking about all things parks and recreation, and having the commission have joint sessions with other commissions or city council to keep the conversation... to keep the conversation alive in the community. But within that, it's also about making sure the city expands its opportunities and engagement programs and making sure that the community's brought in to not just planning for the future, but caring for, maintaining, enjoying, and spreading the word about the wonderful assets that Samamish has. And then lastly, about the communications side of it, promoting and increasing awareness about what's available. A new goal that's inserted into the draft so far is with regard to diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging. And this is an outgrowth of last year's resolution by city council. And this is framed more in line with parks and recreation than maybe citywide. But the intent here is to, you know, promote and provide for opportunities for everyone in the community to be engaged and participate and be active in parks and recreation amenities and opportunities. That includes putting together a diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging policy to kind of touch on accessibility issues and barriers, whether it's geographic or physical access, looking at universal accessibility for, let's say, playground replacements and making sure that all spaces are accessible for all skill levels and ages. But also bringing in the different voices of the community and making sure that there's an effort to hear from and reach out to the diversity that is the Samamish community. And then, on a slightly different angle, is incorporating art and culture and interpretation into the park system. And that could come through community events. That could come through signage at parks. It could be in relation to tribal history, for example. So there's lots of different ways to tie diversity into the park system. Then the next series that we'll go through are kind of the bread and butter park and recreation stuff. So parks and open space, Goal 3 is about just providing a diversified, connected system of parks and open space that gives people the opportunity to have passive experiences, like walking through a forest or looking at some wildlife, or active uses, like playing sports or swimming in the lake. So it includes, in terms of objectives, you know, a continuation of the city's movement toward the land acquisition strategy and utilizing that as a tool to secure additional properties going forward. Also, to continue work with and outreach to the development community to make sure that there are opportunities to secure trail alignments or potentially find pocket parks or other park-type spaces as part of development proposals and working with community development and other city partners to review those as they come through. Additionally, coordinating and working with the county adjacent cities and other partners to find lands for recreation to improve access to. Also, within parks and open space, it's about the design and development of those parks to make sure that they're high-quality, that they provide for diverse experience. And again, some of these suggestions with regard to the objectives here relate to, you know, making sure that the sites are designed based on community input, that they're providing for ADA and other accessibility improvements, and they provide for a range of different experiences. Again, whether it's pickleball, off-leash areas, different range of what might be available today and building that out in the system over time. Maintenance and sustainability is really about the care and management of the properties that the city has in parks and recreation. So maintaining for safety, maintaining for attractive condition, incorporating green building practices into park design to make sure operations are greener. Even in the world of parks, they can be greener over time. And providing opportunities for things like environmental learning. Again, through signage, through volunteer programs or other avenues to get people into the properties to understand what it means to have this park space and care for it over time. Trails and connectivity, pretty self-explanatory. But within the parks or the Pro's Plan, a lot is in relation to the transportation master plan. A lot of the alignments that we're looking at, fall-on-road corridors. The city's pretty well-developed. You're on a plateau. You've got contours and topography to work with. So the coordination between community development, engineering, and parks and recreation is required going forward to figure out what might make sense in terms of future trail connections and connectivity that could link different parks together and improve the system over time. Part of that looks to also secure easements and rights of way for those and also partnering with the development community as appropriate. Climate resiliency is a new one for this Pro's Plan update, and it builds on what you heard earlier tonight. And again, this one is framed in the vein of parks and recreation. So it deals more with specific types of management practices and improvements that are pertinent to park facilities. In this particular goal, the intent is to support the implementation of the Urban Forestry Management Plan, look at tree canopy plans for individual parks. So as certain trees mature, or unfortunately, in some cases where trees have diseases and need to be removed, having a replacement plan in place to ensure that that urban canopy continues and stays intact. But also paying attention to the changes in climate as it relates to the vegetation. So bringing in the types of plants that will be successful 50 years from now, as opposed to those that are successful today that might be waning. So looking at vegetation management, looking at cooperative opportunities with land use or landowners, I should say, for maybe adjacent habitat or vegetation that are maybe near or adjacent to existing parks and open spaces. And then separately, in climate resiliency with regard to parks and recreation, utilizing recreation facilities as emergency preparedness, for emergency preparedness planning, heating, cooling shelters, those sorts of things going forward. Within recreation, recreation facilities and activities. In the prior plan, we had two separate goals. In this plan, we're condensing. The city's primary role in recreation is toward partnerships. The city does some events. It does limited partner or limited programming, but really relies on partners to provide programming as the city provides space for that programming. So we've condensed this goal down to a smaller section. And again, as you can see in each of the bullet items, that the word partner shows up in all three. And it really does rely on partners for programs, partners with school districts for facility space, and partners for events and other activities. Winding down to the last two here, sorry. Funding and Operations. One goal in Funding and Operations has to do with finance funding and making sure that there are tools available to help pay for the improvements requested by the community. And that could be looking at different funding sources, funding options. It also means looking at the rates that are charged for reservations and facility use, making sure that those are updated periodically, as well as updating the park impact fees to make sure that the city's collecting from the development community in an adequate manner. And then periodically updating the capital program, the capital improvement program to make sure that the projects are up to date and moving forward. The last goal under Funding and Operations is about leadership and administration and making sure that the city is doing what it can to be efficient in terms of staffing, management, and operations. It could be in the realm of, you know, contracting, site management, and design. Also, it's about the care of employees and professional development and also making sure that the city continues to hear from users. So user satisfaction surveys and other ways to hear from the community in between these six-year cycles to just kind of track where they are and where the city's going. So that's a real quick, maybe not quick, recap of where we're generally going in terms of goals for this plan process. Again, I know all of you are reviewing multiple projects right now. So this will fit into the comprehensive plan, as Anjali noted. And at this point, I'll turn it back to Janie.
I know you probably have many amazing comments and questions. While you take a deep breath, and I'll explain our next steps, very easy. So we're bringing this exact same content to council next week. They're going to see what you just saw and have the same chance to provide feedback or ask us any questions that we can answer. And then we're going to start getting the draft. So we'll be coming back to the Planning Commission with the draft, Parks and Recreation Commission with the draft, and then City Council. All of those bodies will have a chance to review and provide feedback. Then our wonderful consultant's going to combine all of that and have the final plan ready in like two months. You got it?
Yeah.
All right. So open the floor if anyone has feedback.
Please tell us what you think.
I have quite a number of lists of comments and a question. It looks like it's better probably email it to the staff and then they pass it on to you. But one quick question. Is there any statistics available as far as the usage for each park? What is the most popular park as far as number of visitations?
Great question. And we did not ask in the survey about that level of specificity. But again, that could be a great follow-up sort of survey that happens in between these six-year cycles to track popularity.
This is too long to go over.
Yeah. I was just going to add that we know for a fact from our Maintenance and Operations team that our waterfront parks are the busiest, right? And even from police, who get sometimes called in, there's like Samamish Landing is a waterfront park, Pine Lake Park, and Beaver Lake Park. So in the summer, these are our three busiest parks.
So I have a smaller editorial. Several places in the presentation that mentions passive and active recreation. Old terminology. Because playing frisbee, swimming, hiking are hardly passive activities. That's an unscheduled activity. Playing basketball on a team would be a scheduled activity. So I would suggest changing your terminology to reflect that. And that's particularly important since we all know that the vast majority of visits to our park are unscheduled. It's walking the dog, or going to the beach, or having a picnic. So I think it's important to reflect that. Second is maintenance of existing facilities and connectivity. We're way up there. So this is more of a, maybe a staff question. I don't recall seeing a project in the CIP for capital renovation and replacement. Is that something you're planning to add?
We actually do. We have 200,000 annually set aside for a capital replacement plan. And it's been a fairly heavy lift internally. But our Maintenance and Operations team, with the help of a few staff, actually have set up a spreadsheet which lists everything, all the amenities in every park. And then we try and proactively do it rather than reactively.
Excellent. And I was also happy to hear that you're trying to dip into the Transportation CIP for those connectivity projects.
We'll be talking to them tomorrow.
Said, you had some more comments?
You want me to go through it?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, let's start. One of the slides I saw referenced the incorporating green buildings. This is in contrast with the statement that you made that using engineer synthetic turf and engineer bark. Now, we talked about Climate Action Plan. How can you justify using synthetic turf and then tie it into the incorporating green buildings?
Fair question. And the utilization of synthetic turf is more about extending playability and maximizing the usage of the same space. So without the synthetic turf, there would be a potential requirement to have more field space, which would in turn create more operations burden, you know, removal of trees, et cetera. So there is a balance between providing for those things that are green and those things that accommodate more intensive uses. And with regard to the greening of the park system, it's not necessarily green buildings per se, but it could be enhancements to existing facilities that could accommodate, let's say, solar roof tarp on a picnic shelter or something like that to help lend itself into the Climate Action Plan, for example.
Can I also interject too that, I mean, a grass field is not necessarily environmentally pure. You have fertilizer that goes in there. You have insecticides, pesticides. You have a lot of water use. You have gas mowers that are out there mowing it frequently. So to a certain extent, you know, it's not as big a contrast as you might imagine.
What about using low-impact development and permeable pavements for, within the park? For trails and a walkway and a driveways? Is there something that a staff or a consultant looking into it?
Just to comment on that, the low-impact design techniques are incorporated in all of our park plans as we move forward with new park planning. In some places, permeable pavement does make sense. It doesn't make sense everywhere from a maintenance standpoint and also if the soils are not permeable. However, you know, when we do have those opportunities, it is a priority to take advantage of those.
What about working with the school district as far as introducing and encouraging the teachers and the students to go visit these parks and all that and get them educated about the nature and all that? Is that something that the city's looking into?
It's not something that we're actively doing at this time. We are partnering with the school district more for facility usage. So we utilize the, we rent out the fields during the hours if the school is not using them. But to my knowledge, we're not doing any active education of the students. But we, you know, we have the facilities available.
Sure. One great example is Big Rock Central. If you haven't visited it, it's worth a visit. But so like we mentioned earlier, the city doesn't offer direct programming. We are a very small group of staff. We have a planning side. We have a recreation team that does events and rents our facilities and makes them available. And then we partner with other groups. But there is Nature Vision that is one of the city's partner that offers summer camps in our parks. And one of the parks they've looked at this last summer is Big Rock Central because it has a treehouse. It has a heritage garden with, and that is also really worth a visit if you haven't been there. It's got all kinds of fruits, vegetables, flowers in it. So there's many options to educate children in those parks. And in fact, that land was given to us by Mary Piggott. She donated all 51 acres of her land to the city with the idea that She donated all 51 acres of her land to the city with the idea that it would continue to be open space while a lot of the rest of Sumamish is getting developed and built into homes, and it will allow children to engage with nature.
Is there something like pea patch?
We have a pea patch in the Lower Commons. This one is more, there is a Sumamish Botanic Garden Society, again, a partner of the city, that volunteers and maintains this heritage garden.
Steve, you talk about accessibility. There are two ways to look at accessibility. One is accessibility within the park, both for the public as well as ADA issues, the other one accessibility to the park. I'm giving an example, is a perfect example of lack of accessibility. Evans Preserve, Evans Creek Preserve on Sahali Way. It's located in a place that you don't have a sidewalk, you don't have a crossing, and in order to get into it, you must drive. Did you look at the accessibility to all the parks? This is one example, this is a perfect example, that you're looking at a facility that, based on your survey, 86% they say that they want it to be a place that they can go and jog and all that, but the only way accessible is I have to drive. I'm within half a mile of that, but I have to drive in order to get to that. Did you look at that issue of accessibility for the other parks, for all the parks?
I'm happy to address that because we are one city, we are different departments, and so we are hearing more and more, like you've seen from survey results, that people are interested in trails and trail connectivity. And you're talking about access in a vehicle, but if you had a safe way to walk is something you'd look at. So that is something we will talk to our Public Works team about because they have their own process of their transportation master plan. And what is currently prioritized in their plan is safe routes to school. And that is what is a priority, and that is what is funded. So when you have fixed sum of money, you prioritize. So right now, safe routes for kids to walk to school is a priority. So we are going to talk to them. We don't know if it will make the list, but again, these survey results help validate the need from the community to make those connections.
Janie, you mentioned about the wayfinding signs. The only place that I see the majority of the wayfinding signs is very close to the Fourth Avenue and behind the Metropolitan Market and all that. Is that a matter of funding, lack of funding, that I don't see those signs all over the city?
Great question. And we have been implementing this wayfinding program over the last several years, and it's actually a four-phase program. We've completed phase one and two. So there's two more phases to come. We hope to have those done in the next probably two years, but right now, you know, we're done with phase one and two.
So again, is that a funding issue or is it a timing issue?
That's become more of a staff resource issue. It's just the amount of staff that we have available to work on it.
So again, to stretch our capital dollars, we come up with creative ways to get some of these projects done. This one is entirely in-house. The first phase was even installed in-house by our maintenance crew. So, you know, that's, again, a way to stretch our dollars. If we just farm it out to some firm to take it up, you can add a zero to what it would cost. So, yeah, it will take a while, but we'll get there.
Yeah, the question that I have is that what is the possibility of rotating events for different parks, right, and focusing all in once? That you introduce the people and the citizens to different kind of facilities and all that? Is that something that can be worked on?
Yeah. All great questions. We do attempt to do that. One example is when we annexed Klahani, we actually took Shakespeare in the Park and our Kids Known Series there for a few years. And in the past, we've done a lot of the, the Kids Known Series is, Kids First is basically a one-hour program in the summer. We have about eight of them, and it's catered to younger kids. And the last couple of years, we brought it out here to our plaza, and we bring an ice cream truck, and so it's attracting a different crowd, right? So we do spread it out to the extent we can. Some things we have to bear in mind is parking and making it easy to access. So we have to gauge by the numbers. Some of our smaller parks cannot support events. Through the pandemic, we couldn't offer concerts for the first year. For the second year, we traditionally do them at Pine Lake, and they're now back at Pine Lake Park. It's a great park that allows some kids to go swim while parents can be listening to the music, so a lot of amenities in one place. But there are multiple points of entry, and we needed to control the crowds. So as we were coming out of the pandemic, we had to shift it to the baseball fields at Beaver Lake Park so that we had one gate that we could kind of count the number of people that were entering and leaving. And again, it's a park that has enough parking.
I'm looking at my notes, see if there is anything left.
Maybe while Said goes, I could provide a couple of comments. These are intended more as food for thought, not really anything beyond that. I think that the goals could be a bit more specific, or I hate the word, but actionable. So they feel pretty vanilla bland, general to me. I think, you know, maybe add an example someplace in there, or suggest something specific would put a little meat on the bone. A couple of things I don't think that I saw or heard that feel like they could be in here. One is the need to have a connection to our development regulations. So, you know, when somebody develops a subdivision, are they required to put in something to do with trails, or some amenity, some connection to the park system? I think that might be worth a consideration. We've talked about it a few times in the past. I don't think I heard anything about safety and security, and that's becoming more of an issue everywhere, including Sumamish. So maybe that should be in there somewhere. There's a lot of potential subtopics there, but it ought to be something on the list. The last thing I would just say is that this feels a little bit like, this plan feels a little, I should say first, I think this is great work, covers a lot of ground, a lot of good stuff in here. It also feels a little status quo, like, yeah, good job, guys, keep it up, right? And I think that as a city, we should challenge ourselves, even with limited resources and a good system in place, what could we do? And even if those things are small, you know, there should be a challenge in here somewhere that doesn't just say, let's just keep it up, and everybody's happy campers, and away we go. There should be something in here that says, you know, expand your programs, or try something different, or, I don't know, right? Something that gives people food for thought to say, hey, maybe we could do this different, or maybe we could try this. What do other people do that we don't do? What are things that people are interested in that they might take on as a challenge themselves and be the partner to the city? I'd like to see a little bit of that blended in someplace. So I'm not sure those help you very much, but again, a little bit of food for thought.
Just Mark, can you think of an example of what would be a big challenge?
I wrote down a few things which will potentially reveal my ignorance, but, you know, when you think about different kinds of programs and amenities, we do concerts in the park, which is very popular, and I love it. Could we figure out a way to put an amphitheater someplace in the long-range plan? You know, now that's a funding issue, I get it, but so what? There's a challenge to say, is there a place we could do that? That'd be kind of a nice amenity. Another one that I don't know if we have any kind of a program around it, but astronomy in a dark sky space, find a place that's within our parks that has the most protection from the city lights, and is there somebody out there that would be interested? Is there a club in Sumamish even that would say, hey, let's have a program during the summer where once a week, we, you know, everybody brings their telescopes and takes pictures? I don't know. I mean, it's just things like that, that suggesting that we think outside the box is always a good idea when we develop these plans. And in a city like Sumamish where we have a lot of smart people, I certainly think we should investigate that and challenge ourselves to come up with either big goals for the long term or small ideas that could be something different and new that's a surprise that nobody thought about.
I really appreciate those concrete suggestions. No, I do, I do. I had, when I first started, one of my goals was to get the plastic drinking bottles, you know, that come in at games, because I discovered that that was our largest garbage, was athletic fields, plastic drinking bottles. And, you know, it's these small things, specific things, that make a difference. So I appreciate those thoughts. And yours too, Said. Anybody else? Mark, I said.
So in the site assessment, I didn't hear any mention of this, but I'd like to see bike racks in all of our parks. I'd like to see that really highlighted, you know, in my experience of riding my bike everywhere and having to lock to a fence or a barbecue or something. I'd really like to see it leading to some unhappy park patrons. I'd like to see that really made a priority of, we are going to, you know, we're taking multimodal transport seriously, we're taking accessibility seriously, and we're going to provide these amenities in all of our park spaces.
Said, we're giving you a ticket the next time you lock your bike to a barbecue.
And I'd also like to see us really highlighting the fact that trails have come up, you know, in the 2018 Pro Plan, and again, here, they've come up at the very top of what people want to see. So in goal number six, I think it is of the interconnectivity. I understand it's different departments, but if we emphasize that in the Pro Plan and say, look, this is clearly a need, and it still hasn't been met to the extent the community would like, if we make that a focal point of the Pro's Plan, then it's easier for our park staff, I would think, to, you know, talk interdepartmentally and say, look, this is something we need funding for because it is important.
I have a question. You know, a lot of our neighborhoods have their own parks or trail systems. As part of the inventory, or as you're looking at the plan as a whole, do you take those into account, also in terms of trails and connectivity?
Yeah, actually, we do. We've done a citywide GIS assessment that looks at service areas for city properties, but we also mapped the homeowner association private properties. So we've captured all that information in the plan.
This is more of a question than in the plan itself, but legacy property donations, Mary Piggott is obviously the gold star here, but as you're looking at connectivity issues, identifying, oh, we really would like to have that property, can we offer that property owner a legacy donation where they live out their life in that property and then it's donated? I worked for Bellevue Parks for a long time, and that's a lot of how we got Maidenbauer Bay property. It takes years and years, but you've got to identify those connectivity points now and go after them. Again, it takes staff time, but it is a way to get some of those critical connections done.
Well, I just want to compliment you all because opening up the Beaver Lake for the senior events, I've heard a lot of great things. So thanks to the Parks Commission and you guys, that's awesome. And the second one is on your goal seven, you said you're going to research the facilities to support for emergency preparedness. Awesome. I hope to see some good implementation plan for that. That's all. No questions today.
So I had a question about that. What exactly does that mean, recreational sites for emergency preparedness? You want to? Yeah.
Great question. And again, Mark, to reference your earlier comments about the goals, what was offered tonight is the high-level, really thin version of what's really a lot longer and more in-depth. So hopefully, the more in-depth version that will be part of the plan will address some of the comments that you had earlier about being actionable. With regard to the climate resiliency comment and the objective in there, so for example, I know other communities in the region utilize community centers as gathering places for heating and cooling events. When it gets really, really hot, they can cool, and really cold, they can warm up people who need shelter or need additional support. Or separately, in cases where there's fire or other major event that requires the need for the community to have a gathering place, they're designated gathering places for distribution, communications, et cetera. So that's kind of the intent behind the wording.
Are we set up for that at all? I mean, you know, if we got 200 people in here, could we feed them and put them to bed for a week?
That is a whole separate topic, so I'm going to.
It's just brought up here. I'm thinking, you know, wow, right?
So, yeah, this also extends to the other partners we have, like the Central Washington Site, the YMC, the Sumamish Community and Aquatic Center, and the Boys and Girls Club. So there are other facilities that we are in communication with every time we have power outages, or it's too hot out there. And, but it is work in progress, and it was a topic in council last night, and there is a lot more to be done. Yeah. And actually, I did want to add to what Steve said is that tonight has just been the one piece, that even if you look at the entire goals chapter, the goals chapter will not talk about the implementation. There is a separate chapter you'll see in the draft plan that will talk about the implementation, and so you'll see more actionable items there. And then I also wanted to share that there is a trails chapter that identifies the existing trails, the potential connections, and helps us identify where we need to go fill the gaps. And colleagues in community development, they are pretty good about when they get a fairly big subdivision, they do look at our trails plan, and if they see that there is a trail connectivity where there's a new subdivision going in, then they bring us in. And we actually have one example to share right now where, it's called the Mystic Lake property, is Jacob's Landing. So we try and get public easements and public trails. It's a lot of work, a lot of effort, but if we don't get those connections when those subdivisions happen, then you lose them.
Another good example, Big Rock, these are subdivision.
Yes.
Big Rock down.
Into the park. Yep.
Again, if there's something that we as the Planning Commission can do as part of our review of development regulations, you know, that's something that we should hear about or think about. And I would also just kind of provide a response. Yeah, that's great if there's a lot of details down in the body of the plan. I know you guys know, love to hear this, but lots of people will be lucky if we get them past the first page or the second page on some of these plans. So it's unfortunately very important that we try to make sure that there's a, you know, executive summary, or summary goals, or whatever you want to call it, that gives people enough to then lead them to more of it, or gives them enough so that they know what the city's doing. And that's why I say, you know, we can have appendices galore, and somebody said earlier, simpler is better. That's really true, because a lot of people will never get past the first couple pages. So just keep that in mind.
Absolutely, yes. And there are exciting projects too, and you'll see them in the draft plan too, because, again, we've got some great property that we've acquired and completed master plan, so there will be some exciting projects in the next six years.
Well, your input has been very helpful, and I want to thank Steve and Janie for doing such a good job of listening to our community, because that's what this job, this project is all about, is listening to what people want and then trying to turn it and make specific changes. And I want to mention Chris, who was the commission liaison throughout the Pro's Plan process, went to a lot of the events and kind of kept us on board about what was going on. So thank you, Chris, very much. Okay. Well, you played a leading role, so thank you so much. I think this has been really useful. It's just great to hear what you think about us and what we think about you and what you're working on, and great bringing these ideas together. So hear, hear. What does everybody else think too? There was a lot of content tonight, but we got through it, and we got some good ideas, and I think it was terrifically positive. So hear, hear. Yes, for us. All right. Okay. Is there anything else? I think we have a calendar to go over, right? Kevin, did you want to do that? Or, we have no reports, and we usually do a reports on subcommittees, but we're not going to do that tonight. We can maybe just, everybody has the calendar in hand, they can see it on their website? Is there something else, Kevin, that you wanted to mention?
I just wanted to highlight, because we have a special meeting, the Parks Commission has a special meeting on September 27th. It's at 6:30 here. So because it's out of the ordinary, I wanted to just highlight that. It is on your calendar, so thank you.
So if there's no other business?
I do, I have a couple of announcements for all of you. We have a block party scheduled for September 30th from 11 to 2. It's a Saturday. We are in need of some volunteers to help facilitate the block party. This is to, it's a fun event, it's to solicit feedback on all of the planning efforts, from the comp plan to climate action plan and so forth. And we would love to have representation from our commission. So if you are interested and available on September 30th, please let me know so I can pass your information on to Miriam, who will be in quick contact to get you signed up and get your T-shirt size. The other announcement I wanted to make is we are having a special city council meeting on October 21st from 9 to 5. I'm looking at Evan, he's giving me the thumbs up on those times. This is a very important workshop where we will be reviewing the goals and policies of all the elements for the comprehensive plan, including the parks element. So, again, the goal of this workshop is to be able to leave and give our consultants guidance on finalizing those draft goals and policies, and starting that legislative process which goes through the planning commission, and then to the city council in 2024. But I invite the Parks Commission to participate in that workshop, especially because we will be reviewing the parks element goals and policies. So more information to come, so please stay updated on your emails. And we will be, again, promoting both the event and this council member, council meeting here in the next couple of weeks. So really appreciate it. Thank you. And please come see and volunteer.
Thank you, Kelly. Anything else? All right, if there's any objections, I adjourn the meeting, joint meeting of the Parks and Planning Commissions. Thank you all for coming. I want to talk to you about something that's unrelated, uninteresting. Do you have just a minute?
Sure.
So you probably saw on the news the shooting at Webber Point.